Good evening.
We'll start out with a call, uh, call for, start over.
Patrick Gordon, Principal Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Amanda Duhaw, Department of Student Services.
Sean Moynihan, Principal Sunapee Middle High School, Mrs. Reed had a conflict this evening that will not be here tonight.
David Fladers, Student Representative.
Who is the staff board member?
Major's Dean of School Board.
Carrie Todd, School Board.
Amy McCall, School Board.
Ted Anderson, School Board.
Russell Wilson, Superintendent.
Kelly Russell, Mrs. President.
If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
Kick it off with looking for some approval for our school board meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the May one, twenty twenty four school board meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Any corrections, concerns, or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Look for a motion of the minutes of May first, twenty twenty four, non-public minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the May first, twenty twenty four, non-public minutes.
I'll second.
Concerns, comments, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the minutes of May seventh, twenty twenty four, Policy Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any concerns, comments, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll go for the agenda review.
Can we add a information item, um, girl soccer summer overnight? And I'll have a handout for you when we bring that up in the agenda.
We had a presentation from our food service overview, Robert Follet.
It works. Uh, thank you for having me, folks. Um, so just a few different, uh, or a couple of things on the, where you got to this, so happen to hear about the numbers, okay? Uh, first of all, this is, uh, the elementary school difference between twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, when you look at the lunch numbers, okay, let's say eleven, five, oh, nine, okay? That's including the numbers from the, the penny people and the free reduced kids, okay? They come all together just for each time and strength, so on and so forth. As you can see, we had a wonderful increase from last year to, to this year, uh, down there, uh, because of the increase to the kids. Get to the, uh, middle high school, not so great, a couple of things to look at, going, the breakfast is down, uh, adult sales are down. Um, but when you look at the alacard sales, uh, even though the number is down a little bit, the actual per sale went up about ten percent. Again, their number, twelve, oh, fifty-three, consistent, pay, and the free reduced kids, so on and so forth. So, not, not that bad, not that bad at all, okay? Uh, the adult sales are down mainly because, uh, a lot of the faculty didn't like the fact we didn't sell a bar this year. But later on, we'll, we'll see, uh, with the actual, if we do, uh, grab and go type salads, uh, they're actually up. So, it's, whatever it's doing there is working. Uh, so here's breakdown, you see, uh, drop numbers of both schools at breakfast. A lot of that, it's, there's, there's a communication issue. Uh, when you get to the free reduced application, it sounds like national school lunch. So right then and there, that gets in people's head that they don't understand that breakfast is included in all this too. Just had a kid that, maybe a week ago, waited pretty much all, all year long, didn't realize. So, there's some communication issues that I have to work on to get that message out better. Um, yes, this is the increase in free lunch, uh, the middle high school, um, same thing with the use at the middle high school, which will keep sales down a little bit. Uh, I see the drop in reduced lunch at SCS. Sometimes that happens to kids, they just double up qualify for whatever reason, some move out of town, whatever, who knows? But you can see it down in the bottom there, the alacard sales, uh, increased, I think it was like a dollar twenty per, one last year now it's at a dollar thirty-three. So, a good ten percent increase. Uh, the new display is great, kids love it. Sometimes it gets a little challenging with our, uh, labor situation, uh. Inconsistent stopping is, is a challenge to do the thing that you want to do, to try to take the thing that you really want to, you know, so the kids get a good experience out of it. Um, there's this break in the sea, uh, of the adult sales, um, for the grabbing of the salads and, and I, I was kind of surprised myself that they wouldn't do that much. But it's a, it's a great thing, they, they, they don't have to wait three, four days to, yeah, off to lunch. Uh, a new stuff again, it's, it's well received, kids can see it, help run, uh, go again, with the just saying, you know, uh, consistent labor challenges is, is an issue. And hopefully we can try to do that and change that by next year. These are some of the energy I can see that will, will, that we're selling, you know, fresh fruit cups, we just started this if the warmer weather gets in, you're trying to gear stuff to the tight season it is. It's been a big hit. Uh, it's also, you know, a lot of higher price, uh, items, which didn't seem to bother anybody, okay? When you look at the stuff, this was the new order we got last year, it's full of breakfast items, you can see muffins, there's bagels wrapped in there, there's some pretzels, breakfast sandwiches. Uh, you can see the rack of chips that we have, and that's something when the kids are looking at it from, from the line, you can see all the stuff behind there, they, they can see what's in there. So they can walk up and say, okay, I don't want that, or can you add that as well too? This is the, called the virtualizing, where you see there's salads down at the bottom, it's all packed up, ready to go. A lot of the food cups there, on top of that, if they want chicken with it, they can have chicken, uh, parfaits. One of the things that's worked out pretty well, I assume, was, was hummus and chip snacks. That's, it seems to go quite well, which I'm kind of surprised at. Yogurt, of course, a lot of those, usual stuff. Moving forward, these are some of the things that I'm thinking that we could possibly look at. One thing that they blew free, not necessarily because it's, uh, a health issue, uh, a lot of it right now is like the lifestyle change. Uh, especially if you get the athletes, for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, but they, they like to blow free, maybe their souls are down, I'm not sure, so that's something to look at. Uh, when I go back, when I look at, I was at the Tilton School, we're going to isolate a, a gluten-free section. I don't know if we can do that here, as well as anything, you like isolate some areas, and one of the coolers, they have a gluten-free for, for those that want, whether it's celiac or something else. Uh, one thing that I like to try to do is examine speed involvement. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to hear, what I get to know, I don't know, is have a big huge rhombus ball, art, so the kids can build their own balls. They can walk through, we'll pull a hot rock over, see how good they are with chopsticks. Um, possibly examine the use of technology, uh, when it works. There's apps out there that can hack your mind out, uh, which basically, you could, a lot of people use it as a big grievance section, or just to say, oh, Sunday pizza sucks, or this or that, whatever, or raw here, no good. But most of the time, you, you filter that out, you get a lot of good responses out of it. So, uh, might be something to look at, or an apple dining apparatus that, that, that can look as well too. Uh, another, we'll reach out to local, um, producers and see what they have. Uh, somebody done contacted the O A this year of, um, egg syrup. So we can do, you know, work both ways, see what happens, they can market us, vice versa, you know, keep things local. This is what the line looks like right now, this is just, just take this, uh, it was a couple of weeks ago, so you see there's enchiladas, there's rice, there's corn, um, tortellines, marinara, uh, cold sauce. And we have them up here in the, in the cold, uh, the milk crates, so on and so forth, the cats cold and, 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 okay? So that's what ours looks like, okay? This is something that we like to get to, okay? You look at the sides, it's all grabbing go, okay? You look at the shell, you look at the back, it's all grabbing go. More of a wish list, but stuff to, to dream about. And this is something like the rhombus balls, I was trying to hopefully got, you know, that we can get to, um, the old salad bar that's there, we can put everything in there, the kids can pick it up, it will buy. Keep on going, keep on one, two line, and keep on going, so on and so forth. And with that, the stuff sets, and my presentation books, thanks for having me.
We go right to it.
Questions for us?
What, what do you think is driving the, uh, labor challenges?
I think a lot of people are looking to work for a whole time, now that it's more so than just dollar value. It's the same type of challenges to add with that, one is state, so, uh, same thing you had at Tilton Stage. It's also a type of environment, because we are in a part-time situation, and once the years go over, well, okay, summer's paying eighteen fifty hours, I'm going to go there. But then they go last there for nine months, because summers would be paid nineteen twenty-five hours, then they're going to go there. It's one of those nature of these type things in the business as well too. It is what it is. A lot of people I think are looking for a quick buck, they want to sit there and, and, you know, they, they love to come in, it's a great job, it's great hours. But they want twenty-five bucks down, you know, so if you break your pride, it's, it's, um, that's what we. I'm not sure if there's, if there's enough, I, I see people my age that are, you know, semi-retired, whatever, that are out there, looking for a job like this, I don't know. Um, I, I keep looking all the time, I look, I see the same ads over and over and over again, the same people. And I, I'm not sure what the answer is, uh, but it's like, maybe some of the, you know, interested discussion on some of that.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, a set answer, Rob's done a great job this year, because we've had some people that were consistent going into the beginning of the year. Uh, I think people chase the money, given the environment, which is great, I know that, right? Um, we bank borrowed and stealed, I think for everyone in the room at one point in time, serving lunch or breakfast, uh, which was a great experience. And we've been able to sort of piece mill along the way. We've now picked up someone just over a month ago that is, you know, semi-retired, second, third job. Because it's really a three to six hour job, right? And you're really looking for someone who's just looking for that specifically, coming in at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, getting out of here around one o'clock, maybe two. And it's just, it's a tough, it's a very, it's a niche.
There used to be a lot of that type of people around, just nodding, where they like.
So we've, we've shaken the trees and banged on the drum, and we've pulled some people, and we, we have a couple of nice people now that are, and as we're upset, I think, as people get in, because the typical, wow, this is new to me. Right? They're coming out of a completely different business, one was an accountant. Uh, and so they're in there making sandwiches for the first time, you know? We can make sandwiches, but Rob's got a, okay, this is how we make sandwiches, so we use the slicer. So hopefully, as, as he says, that labor continues to be consistent, he can start bringing up.
Have we investigated how much the new, new, uh, serving area would cost or?
We did, well, we had a quote on that.
For the whole area? I, I can't recall, it, it, it's, it's a good chunk of change. It, it's one of those things, I, 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 I could point you out, it's in this contract, and I asked him how much the commercial kitchen costs, you know? It's roughly six hundred dollars, four foot. But then again, you don't know what's behind that wall and all that stuff, okay? Um, stuff like the kitchen like that. I actually bought for. Four hundred thousand dollars, you know? And again, that's just, and that might not be, that just might be not going to roll out like a, like that picture before. You know, walk around. You see how it walks around? So if you picture where we are now, we walk, we have that side, and they're almost as plain to walk around, that you kind of think they're down in the same place, and walking on the, and the other passion real size. So the kids would just keep on going, instead of us having a, so they just wrap, okay, whatever, and, and they go.
The, the issue, you know, this part is super expensive, you talk about the refrigerator and the shelf, like, well, we have to get some space. So we gotta go back into our kitchen and add a window cap a little bit, and not do, 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 fifty, fifty, fifty.
And they have a steamer, and we go, but, we said we have a steamer, but access the water and the hot water, how do we change? Do we have to do without a dishwasher, like, how much refrigeration we have to do? I mean, we, we have plenty of freezer and cooler space.
Yeah. Would this, would this help with your labor issue, if you could pre-make some things?
Um, yeah, and, and, and one of the things too, is like, you know, everybody wants to work in a new place.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it, it's, and, 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 I don't know how much more to say about that, but it's, it's, that's, I think, very important.
Do you have trouble serving, like, all the students, given how short the lunch break is? Is it difficult to get all the students served and them to have enough time?
No, uh, it, it, it's what I call mechanics, something that's easy to serve, you know, people sit there, like, let's, let's see, make a, uh, there, there's some that they can, can do, but it's all right, we have enchiladas up there. We gotta, yeah, yeah, and take this batch, you know, that might take a little bit of time. But you have like cheeseburger, or chicken nuggets, or burritos, or something like that, it's really, it's literally, uh, you need down, uh, it's, we go through, Rob, how long does your taste go through?
Ten minutes for the entire, yeah, fi- ten minutes max for like the entire, everybody there.
How long we should, how long we should lunch? Cause I just know elementary, it takes longer.
It's like twenty-five minutes, right? I actually told you about.
It's a big job.
Yeah, it's funny, I was just, I was just gonna say, it's, uh, it, it's short, but if you are supervising it, it feels like an hour. Well, but actually, I should, I should rephrase that. Uh, the middle school supervision feels like an hour, the high school one feels more like about twenty-five minutes. But they have about twenty-two, twenty-three minutes, and, and you really can see that it's enough time in this sense. When they're done eating, it gets very loud, and so they, they pretty much finish it at twenty-one. They're, the, the, the food service does a great job, and the kids do a great job. You know, they move through, they get their food, they sit down, they eat, um, and, uh, and, yeah, yeah. The, the, the high school does pretty well, the middle school, once they're done with their food, you're like, can we have fifteen minutes?
Middle school, because they can come up, they want a nice table, they want lunch, then they want to wait for high school, and, and they came up, it was a horror show. So they made a wall full line first, everybody get their lunch first, at least eat your lunch, then go to, you know, whatever, uh, the stuff they want. Sometimes they'll buy one for ice cream, it's wrong.
So do you need any servers with the style of kitchen?
What you, uh, not, it, wait back here, can you see that door?
It's still hot, it's still.
Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
There's a hot, a little box, a little box, and the kitchen, you can back there, that's what we, catch here. But they come out, and you just clean it, okay? And you don't want, oh, okay, and then after, after, well. It comes all the way, as you can see, the, it's probably, probably recovering, we're gonna have it, one comes out just cleaning, that's just one, one comes in, this one, that's up. Now, this is just, I just pulled this off.
Sure.
A little shelf would come out here, and pick your pizza dough. Just give you an idea of what it looks like.
Some of that's a U large. Yeah.
Yeah.
When you see, uh, it's off, you know, maybe, it's, it's quick, quick in and out, you know?
Just curious, you said the fruit cups were kind of pricey, what are you charging for the fruit cup? The fruit cup? See, that's still three dollars cheaper than a hand cut or anything.
Very expensive, if you're on the challenge, you have to, you're, you're something, buying something, you're walking, you're not gonna notice, it's just seven fifty.
That's still a bargain, and it looks so fresh.
Exactly, yes, yeah. But we sit there in school settings, different.
Again, Rob's done a, a really nice job managing the kitchen, come up with some creative ideas, again, trying to get, you know, bringing up the speed. That cafeteria needs a little bit of a refresher, needs a lot of a refresher, that kitchen line, you sho- you show it from the outside in, come the other way if you're kids, it's just not appealing. Right? It's not appealing the way it's set up.
No, no.
I do appreciate, just trying to refresh that, and we've talked about it for a few years now, I think we can, I, we've talked about it in the C I P committee as well, so I, I think we'll go, we'll get some hard numbers. And to that point, the elementary school, and this one's horrible, the elementary school one might have been hand-built, uh, back in the sixties, you see?
Oh, yeah.
It's literally, you know, high wooden, deep wooden, so, uh.
Do you track how many students use the services, as opposed to like how many meals you're selling? I'd, like, I'd be interested to know, like, as you look at your trends over time, like, is your student usage increasing?
Yeah, we can break that down to the system.
And, and your adults too, right, like?
Yeah.
So, the. Well, can I just combine those numbers for degrees? Like, that, that number from the, from the, uh, 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 high school, high school, is actually, um, we saw the thirty thousand dollar upping number, it actually was like nine thousand one hundred and eighteen, like, those were the paying ones. So, none of the three thousand, the free ones, which, of course, I had to put that dollar down there, because that's just basically a reimbursement from the government. So that, that takes away from actual, uh, paid sales. But there is, there is numbers that you can't track.
Yeah, I was just curious, like, if there's sort of like a target that you're working towards, like, you want to be able to serve, like, I don't know, what, I'll make it up, like, fifty percent, fifty percent of our population uses this service, right? Versus if you see that trending down, then you find a problem, if it's trending up, you're doing something right-ish, right?
Yeah, the whole, we're trending up, okay? And when I look at something like this, in the middle school, that number is trending up, but they're all moving up to the high school. But, um, the numbers feel, you, you can break it down, and it's been put a few ways, and all that stuff, we, um, we're not going down, okay?
Which is good.
Something good points going up, with the, the average sale per item is going up, okay? The numbers basically say, it's just that my biggest concern right now is breakfast. How do we get them to, to do that? A lot of them don't come in till, you know, thirty-seven seconds.
That's part of it, that, that says, that's an issue on a couple of different accords, right? So one, it's helping communicate to kids who have three or who are sick and have access to that. But you're also trying to work two big things, morning recess and dog. And so you gotta pull kids away from dog, well, morning recess, they go in and sit down, they have a bowl of cereal, and typically, they're not thinking about the cereal after they already sit down, but after the dog bite. And we do try to help a lot of the kids, the elementary school kids, high school kids can come during the, uh, during the advisory period, but, yeah, we, we definitely can do better, have better communication on trying to get kids.
Yes, yeah.
We did have grabbing goes for breakfast at one point in time, to go to the window, and they would grab out of the window and bring it up in the field. I don't want to think about that again. Thank you, Rob.
Can you just, uh?
I was just gonna say, grabbing at the elementary school food allergies, we usually don't have the children being unified at all, at the elementary school.
I know we did, I think two years ago, we had, uh, we did it out the window, we had brown bags, and kids were taking brown bags, uh.
It's, it's something.
It might have been a COVID thing too, though, yeah. It might have been a COVID thing, you're right.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And you brought some cookies and water, so.
Moving on, public four, in accordance with policy B E D H, our public like to talk to. Seeing none. Uh, school updates, S C D S.
Well, it's been busy last month. Uh, we're full swing in the end of year assessments and celebrations, uh, for the year to come to a close, for our mentors, since we have field trips. Every grade's gone on at least one, fifth grade beach days on Monday, and the graduation is next Wednesday. Uh, field day is next Tuesday, and there's been so much more that's happened in the last month. Uh, it's been a busy month with assessments. We did our New Hampshire State assessments for math and science in, math, science, and reading, excluding writing, in May. Um, our students did a great job, I haven't sat down and dissected the information compared to, uh, last year's or previous year's data, like I presented to you in October yet. That's a July project, but I look forward to sitting down, looking at that, and, uh, presenting it to you. Our local assessments are coming, are showing strong student growth. Um, we used our dyslexia screener again in kindergarten and first grade to do some assessments and check in on progress. Um, and we just saw wonderful growth. Uh, s- many of our students met their target growths, um, or exceeded it, same in math. Uh, we, we do a great job at not just reaching a year's growth, but if a student's behind, trying to reach for more. Uh, we provide the supports that they need to be able to do that, and our teachers are just wonderful at being able to embed classroom instruction that's meaningful for them. Teacher Appreciation Week was a few weeks ago, beginning of May. Uh, thank you to S P T O for putting on a wonderful, uh, event for our teachers. I heard lots of really wonderful comments from it, they felt really great about it. Um, it was just an awesome week and a lot of smiles all around. It's always good to have you. Uh, kindergarten orientation was last Wednesday, two Wednesdays ago. Um, we have around twenty-five or so students who are coming in. Uh, I expect, just like last year, that number will creep up, maybe two or three more over the course of the summer. Uh, the, oh, my kids coming to kindergarten, I just realized that, uh, phone call will come. Uh, so I expect probably around, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, which I think is about our average right now. Uh, teachers have been working on class lists for next year. Uh, we are going to be, uh, using Alma as the entryway to get in your class placement letter this upcoming year. So what that means is in July one, we're gonna send out the Alma reregistration to families. And August fifth, that Monday, we're gonna send out the class lists to those who completed it. Uh, it'll just be helpful, because we spent quite a bit of time this year in September and October, chasing down about thirty or so families to get them registered. So we really want to make sure we get that done before the kids enter school, so we have all the updated contact information and all that. Uh, the Asia Expo is today for fourth grade, and the students just blew me away with their level of research, their level of learning. Uh, Katie Blewett and Leslie Shealy did a great job, um, expanding the project, and they have dreams for next year of some more things they want to do, incorporating, uh, Mary Willis with art, and doing a project with that, and a few more ideas. It's, it's, it's a really great, uh, project, we've never been, uh, and I can share the date with you next year, so you can come. And, uh, one of my favorite parts of the year has been in the last two weeks, is the teacher end of year meetings, talking to the teachers about, uh, their glows, one went really well. And I hear a lot about the students, students who may, exceeded growth, the students who challenged themselves and did something that was unimaginable a year ago. Um, talking to them about how I can support them further, so that they can have fewer barriers to being able to succeed and making plans for next year. So that's been the month. Been a good month.
Moving on to S O H S. Student Representative.
Well, it's finally here, the end of the year is upon us. For many of us students, that means that our time here at Sunapee is coming to an end, and students will have the great success of track, baseball, and softball teams to remember. The end of the year and the start of the summer is very exciting for most students, and they got a taste of potential summer activities with the success of today's field day, hosted by our very wonderful student council. Non-seniors are preparing for their final exams as of now, and after completing that last hurdle, will have a straight shot to the rest of the summer. As a whole, I'd like to thank Ms. Board for the incredible opportunity I've had as a voice for the students, and congratulate everyone involved with the school system on the success of all students of all ages this year.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
All set? Uh, it's been busy. Couple of things I wanted to focus on, we, we had our middle school stretch week, uh, which was a little bit different this year. We intentionally did the all three grades doing something the same week. And so when the eighth grade did the Gettysburg trip, the sixth graders did their nature's classroom trip. And the seventh grade did what we call the staycation, where they did a lot of, uh, they visited the fells, they did some fun activities at school, they created a one act play. We would love, and we have in the past, to be able to take all three grades out of the building that week. Um, it just really is hard staffing this, you know, when you look at, um, you know, we have so many people out the building already, and it's like, you know, I really would, I would do it, as crazy as it sounds. My wife every year is like, you're not going again, are you? I'm like, I'm going again. But I'm already going on something, so for me to take the seventh grade, or for Mrs. Parsons to take the seventh grade, so we're trying to figure out ways to do that. Um, but I think they did a really nice job of coming up with some fun activities, uh, for them during the week, so, so that was good. Um, last night, we had our band and chorus, uh, concert, uh, for the middle school and high school, and, and many of them will be traveling to the Great East Festival on Friday. Uh, we've got the class day that's coming up tomorrow, graduation is coming up on Friday. One thing I, I want to, I'm not gonna give all the information, but I've been really impressed with three groups. Um, at graduation, you're gonna see the scholarship amount, which is being awarded to our seniors, and it's, it's overwhelming, uh, quite frankly, and it, and it has a lot. And it, and it has a lot to do with our, our very generous community. Uh, it has a lot to do with a lot of work by guidance, particularly Ms. Watkins, who just goes above and beyond to just make kids, you know, aware of all these different things that are happening. And it really goes out, uh, to our seniors, who not only, you know, it's one thing to say, hey, this is available. It's another thing for when that's made available for the seniors to then actually follow through with it. And we have numerous times when our students are interviewed, and you can't give a scholarship to everybody. But there are times when the group leaving here gives a scholarship to everybody, they're just like, we can't, you know, we, we weren't able to just give four, we had to give eight or nine. Sometimes they find extra money, and sometimes they maneuver things around. Um, but the, the, the amount is staggering, and it, it goes to a lot of different groups. And so I don't wanna share that number right now, 'cause I'm gonna share that number at graduation. Um, but when you see the number of kids who are receiving scholarships and, and who's, who's giving them and all those things, um, it's really a testament to, when we're looking, you know, we want the school to do well, we want the students to do well, we want our professionals to do well, we want the community to be part of the education. It, it, it's just there in, in, in an unbelievable amount. So I just wanted you, you get to graduation to, to be looking for that, and it's, it's pretty impressive, and when you look at, geez, who's responsible for that? You're looking at all different types of people responsible for that, so really proud of a lot of people on that.
Superintendent update.
Thank you. Again, David, I just wanted to thank you for sitting in this year and being board chair. You were actually, I'm not sure if you realize this, but you are first elected board chair based upon U R S A, so you have that honor for the rest of the time, but you're, you're an elected official.
I'll try to get a plaque.
You do, we do have a gift coming for you, uh, hopefully something to thank you, but also to help you go to college, remember who we are. So that'll be coming, I'll get that to you later. So thank you again.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Certainly, as folks said, it's been a busy time, and I can certainly talk to you about evaluations and contracts and legislation and policy, and they talked about some projects in there. But I don't think it's, it's an important time to talk about the people, 'cause right now, for David, it's a time of being excitement, for his parents, it's probably a time of, alright, we made it, we think, we're ready to go, I hope. Uh, for teachers, it's like, we're almost there. I think before everybody, when we step back and we really think about this, it's something we can all be proud of, right? There is an opportunity here for us not to miss the work that we've all done collectively, whether you're a student, you're a parent, you're an educator, you're a board member, you're a parent educator, you're a food service worker. We've all contributed to the success of our kids going to that next step, whatever that next step is. Kindergarten to first grade, high school senior up to college. So as much as things are crazy and moving and busy, I hope time, people take the time to step back and just reflect a little bit about all that you've done, either individually and or collectively, to help that next step be happening by all the kids in high school. And then lastly, I'll just finish, we're gonna talk a little bit more about some projects. Uh, I'll, I'll mention two things. One, so some projects we have, hopefully have some, some approval tonight, but definitely the biomass, we haven't seen it, you can go take a look, it's underway. Windows Elementary School moving in the shed, uh, fortifying, fortifying the elementary school four-year, paint and trim, and just some general cleaning that'll be happening throughout the district. Uh, and, you know, the, the legislature has driven crazy all year, uh, that's my own fault for paying attention. But it's great now 'cause you're in what's called committee conference, and so they haven't agreed to pass bills. So now they have to break off and have like three and three, or four and three, and they have to go in a room and they tell advice, and they basically argue like children, literally middle school children, about what they want, what they don't want, they can't come to consensus. So it's kinda like a comfortable circle, like, you know, we all present, we try to say this is what's good, this is what's bad, they ignore us. Now they sit in a room with each other and they just ignore, ignore each other, so it's kind of interesting to watch. Certainly will be some things going across the governor's desk, we'll wait to see how that reflects us, uh, and what that effect has on the way out as a board, but in policy. So that's it, we'll move forward.
Policy update, AC attached lists, uh, reviewed policies.
So we, um, met twice, we've got, I apologize for my voice, I'm just weird, it's on the cold, I might even just let you talk, this would be much better, if you wanna just talk, so... Sure, yeah, we have reviewed some policies, uh, in May, and we are looking to propose the reviewed withdrawn and recoded policies under the board today. Um, and just open for any questions on these policies.
Withdrawn, rescinded policies?
Sure, uh, the ones that are being withdrawn and rescinded are duplicative, so there, the components of those policies are covered in some of the other newer reviewed policies. So we're just trying to decrease duplicacy or redundancy. Yep.
Alright, and then recoded policies, anything standing up there?
No, I just, uh, uh, just reorganizing some of the policies, so nothing has changed really besides the, the letter attached to it.
And it's a lot of reading.
Why?
It's a lot of reading.
And it's a lot of reading, so the public and the board are welcome to read them on the website, so...
Which we do.
So they have done, listen, so one of the first things we did when we came, uh, was we did an apology, and so we're not, ten years later, eleven years later now, we're doing an apology for you again. And it's, we found, I'm finding a couple of things with the help of my two new board members. What a great way to help board members understand to be a board member, knowing through all these policies. Lot of policies don't change, obviously, uh, but this is great work, we actually had another meeting last Tuesday, and so in August, we'll bring another bunch of policies forward, and just doing some good work, and it's really good. Again, one of your primary functions as a board is policy, and being able to review this and keep this covered is really important, the work that you do to help us do the work of it, so thank you, Paulson.
Moving on to action items, approve the superintendent to hire certified personnel over the summer.
So this is something we do every year, because we, um, well, because we are going to the Center for Times, we're not gonna potentially meet into, uh, August, which is customary for us here. Uh, there may be positions, there will be at least one that we're gonna hopefully vote on tonight, and we had a late resignation, and we're gonna have to hire. My hope is that we'll be able to find that person, hire that person, to go out in front of you in August. And this way, if we have a candidate, we can get that candidate, get him hired, get him, get him approved without waiting for board approval at our next meeting. What I will do, if we do hire anybody, specifically teachers, obviously, because you hired, you hired teachers on my recommendation, I'll bring that name forward to you, but I, I took this action to your next school meeting.
Resolution to authorize one million two hundred...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, looking for a motion to approve the superintendent to hire certified personnel over the summer.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent to hire certified personnel over the summer.
I'll second. Just how many positions do we, like, I, obviously, we see the resignation, just the ones?
Right now, we have one, potentially one in a twenty percent, but let it out.
Do we, is that including, uh, Shawna Otis's position, or no?
Uh, no, that, that would, you wouldn't hire that position, that would be under, uh, that I would hire.
That you would hire.
But we're, we're actually interviewing for that next week, and we think we have a couple of smoke in.
Okay, cool.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, looking for a motion for a resolution to authorize one million two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred dollars of lease purchase financing, biomass boiler, and associated building improvements at district facilities.
So you have to read that resolution, make it approved, it's in there.
Yes. Alright, the motion we're looking to approve is the resolution to authorize one million two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred dollars of lease purchase financing, biomass boiler, and associated building improvements at district facilities. The improvement form presented to this meeting and that, and a tested copy of said resolution be included with the minutes of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to authorize one million two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred dollars of lease purchase financing, biomass boiler, associated building improvements at district facilities.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve allocating one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the contingency account from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four unassigned fund balance.
Make a motion to approve allocating one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the contingency account from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four unassigned fund balance.
I'll second.
Questions, last one.
Sure, uh, so now this year, we're in a bit of a different financial situation come year end, um, due to the special education expenses, which, you know, we, you know, budgeted over a year prior, not knowing who's coming in. Um, the expenses that will happen, and we always try to prepare for those. And thankfully, we have, and that happened this year, that scenario. So I've talked to our auditors and the Department of Education, and asked them, um, for recommendations and some feedback and advice. Um, and the Department of Education actually said that our board and community have done a great job in making sure that we don't have any issues. With having capital reserves and approving the contingency funds, having those available, we can cover any unforeseen overages. If we didn't have that, we'd be in a much different situation at year end. Um, so with that being said, they recommended that we take the unassigned fund balance, move it to the contingency, and that way you have full authority to do what you need to do to cover, um, your budget. And at this point, we do have, you know, hot funds that are, um, still encumbered, but you have to approve this before the end of the month, so that's why we're saying, well, two. Um, because once those occurrences become free, if not everybody uses their full mass, then we'll have to handle a little bit of money freed up, but at least this will cover those, and once it's in there, we can cover any of those.
So I mean, let's add a little piece to that, 'cause I think that's the difference. So we have over-expended our budget. The, um, because we have excess revenue, excess revenue at the end of the year becomes fund balance. We can take that fund balance and put it into our contingency fund, and hopefully later on, such as the evening, you have enough proof taking contingency funds to cover back to our budget. I couldn't take the revenue from the additional revenue received and put it directly to the budget, 'cause it's over-expending of the appropriation, without falling from a reserve fund, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so when you say we're over-expended, we're over-expended on the special ed budget.
We are, which is our, we're telling people our overall budget, our daily growth budget, that one specifically has drawn a budget out.
Yep.
Whereas, we're, we're making the assumption that we're going to be at least a hundred, up to a hundred fifty over our overall budget.
So you'll see it on the expense side, so later, you'll still see funds available for the unassigned fund balance, but it will come from the excess revenue, which we can't just take in the lap.
Are you probably so comfortable with the replace that you've gotten for the revenue?
Absolutely, with the old books, they're comfortable, and we do have the funds to cover.
Both are in the department of services, I think.
I mean, we could take out of the capital reserves, but if you do that, then we're putting money in just to get them for the unassigned fund.
Yeah, I think you have it, right? So you can put money at any point in time, you have a contingency, capital reserves, you have to have voter approval to put it in. You can take it out, you don't have voter approval.
But you have more authority with the contingency.
And probably not the time to talk about it, but presume that this type of a scenario will have an impact on budget discussions in the fall?
Uh, well, since we've, hopefully, what we've already forecasted going into this is recovered for next year.
Yep.
And we believe the issue will have rectified itself, and then our capital reserve funds continue to be in place of that need of need.
Done, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed anti-discrimination plan twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed anti-discrimination plan twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second it.
So just why, um, we all see in, in August, we'll have an anti-discrimination policy came out, uh, in the spring policy updates for first reading, and it says in the plan that we have to, in the policy that we have to...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to ten thousand dollars from the Sunapee District Grounds Capital Reserve for moving of maintenance shed.
I'll make a motion to approve proposed spending, if needed, up to ten thousand dollars from the Sunapee District Grounds Capital Reserve for moving of the maintenance shed.
I'll second.
So again, with the biomass coming in, we'd like to take the shed worth, worth the back of the building, put that on a slab. Uh, we do, we got a couple of quotes, we gotta do some quotes to be able to do that. Uh, we're asking for ten thousand, we still probably have some money that we call out of our, um, our budget for next year, but the ten thousand will cover the majority of that. I'm asking for ten, because obviously, they're ready to go come June twelfth, and we're gonna have that thing lined up and ready to go as well.
What's stored in that, quickly?
Uh, one more is salt, sand, vessel, mean...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the contingency account to cover twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four special education expenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the contingency account to cover twenty-twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four special education expenses.
I'll second it.
So the second part of that motion.
Yeah.
Any other questions concerning the comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to sixty thousand dollars from the Sunapee Middle High School Capital Reserve Roof Account to cover work completed in twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to sixty thousand dollars from the Sunapee Middle High School Capital Reserve Roof Account to cover the work completed in twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
Um, interesting, thank you. Um, you have through sixty thousand dollars back in twenty-twenty-two, it was sort of a three-phase situation. Phase one was done, phase two was done, uh, never received bills, they came back, since phase three, last summer, never billed us for it. We, we, they, they had a change in personnel in their, in their, in their structure, never got billed, never got billed, we finally got it. We, he actually let himself bill it, and so you've already approved this sixty thousand, but because of the time lapse, we're gonna ask to have it pulled again until it's fresh enough.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to accept the resignation of D. Vannan, if I said that correctly.
I can motion to accept the resignation from D. Vannan. I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Can we be sad? Can we be sad?
Alright, well, just go ahead, all those in favor? Information items, strategic plan updates.
So, uh, again, our action steps from my strategic plan, um, the district, whole schools, technology, uh, special ed, all have given you updates on what they've been doing this year. They'll continue to achieve, uh, our action steps, so those are there, any questions, please, let me know.
When does, um, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five strategic plan happen?
I'm sorry?
The twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five strategic plan, like, what's that process, because this is twenty-three to twenty-four?
Right, we have, we're not gonna back in, probably middle of this year, we'll think about strategic plan.
Okay.
Graduation, June seventh, twenty-twenty-four, Sherwin Jim at six P M. Seeing none? How many are graduating this year?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Of thirty-two. It's what we like that.
I was gonna say, that's about the same.
Probably back then, there were like four or five who made the principal sweat last week and things like that, too.
I did, one of them. Alright, and next school board meeting we have set, I know it's the ending of summer. Hopefully it takes a while to get there, but does anybody have any concerns with August 21st? Looking for a motion to approve the manifest. Can you do the girls soccer?
Oh, girls soccer.
Well, that's coming around, Charlie. I just wanted to do this quick.
Yes, my apologies. We've been better at this with just having Mr. Oldman be able to approve trips that are repeating trips, and most of our overnight trips are repeating trips. But Mr. Cooney has proposed an overnight trip for the soccer, girls soccer team in the summer. I'm passing out the email that he sent to me, which I approved. We just didn't get it transferred into a, an official form in a timely manner. But he has reached out to some of the North Country Schools, Division Four schools for preseason, preseason jamboree. He's gonna touch, touch ground in Lidwood, which is Lincoln Woodstock, Plymouth State, and Plymouth. So he, he envisions having three shortened games. And what he's hoping to do is, is go there on Saturday, kinda have some, you know, go swimming Saturday night, come back Sunday, and, and not run into, let's have four different days where we're putting on, kids on buses for two hours each way and then back. And I think it's a good idea. It's likely Mr. Cooney's last year's soccer coach. I know I've said that a few times, but I, I really do believe this is his last year. And I'm sure it'll be a good, good, good experience for the kids. So I would certainly recommend it if I didn't recommend it. It has to go before me, before it even comes to the board, but I would recommend it. But it is new, and because it's new, it needs to go before you. We have a motion. We need a motion if somebody's okay with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed overnight soccer trip.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna wait till after I made a mess that was brought up.
Alright, because we haven't had a lot of motions tonight, we're looking for a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Agenda items for next meeting?
We'll give you a summary of where we stand walking into this media from a member's standpoint. Let you know that we're hiring new people, how many people we hire, obviously. And then we have dates legislatively, and we will definitely have some policy, some first read, some reviews and the draws. I think that's a good place to start.
We start budget negotiations in August, too, is that right?
Thank you, Gary. I actually did send the, it's okay. They have three dates on it. They have not confirmed, but we'll, we'll pick one of those dates to at least have our initial ground rules, rule setting, short meeting. And then we typically start in October with a full negotiation.
I'll be with the first weekend. I think it was later, though, right?
It was right, we were in.
Okay.
Just quickly, I wanted to share with the math resignation. You may see, so we've, we only have one opening, but we put out two positions. One is an anticipated. The rationale for that is it's late in the hiring process. Our goal would be to get a high school teacher who can teach the high school math classes that we have. That would be the goal. We have a lot of teachers with a lot of flexibility. It's kinda one of the necessities of being here. If by some chance, when we're going through the interview process, we saw that the best solution would be to move some people in this building around into a high school position. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that and then have to go through the whole process again because it's so late. If that makes sense. So if this was opening in March, we would just have one. And if that was what we decided, then we would still have time. But that could cause-